All right, we're gavel down.
Anytime we decide.
Okay, everyone, we are live on the Internet and this is our appointed Mayor, Jay Wagner, let call this meeting to order. And just welcome anyone who is listening online. Before we begin, or actually as part of our beginning, I'm going to call the roll. I'll announce who is here physically present and we'll ask those who are here remotely if they would answer in. Here present in the room have Councilwoman Monica Peters, Councilman Britt Moore, Councilman Wesley Hudson, Councilman Victor Jones, and Councilman Cyril Jefferson. I'm also present in the room. I expect the mayor pro tem, Chris Williams, here any minute. Councilman Holmes, are you with us remotely?
He's in the meeting.
Councilman Holmes, are you with us? Our system shows that he's with us, but he's not answering. So it could be a problem with his mic or something, but because he's on the computer, I'm going to mark him here. I believe Councilman Tyrone Johnson also is planning to remote in, but I don't see that he's here yet. Okay, so we do have a forum present and are able to proceed. The first item, we have three items for this. This is a special meeting. We have three items on the agenda. The first is a closed session for a personnel matter, and then we will return from that closed session and we will be discussing a telecommunications ordinance revision and some small area use plan revisions and reviews. But as of now, I will need a motion to go into closed session for purposes of personnel. So I believe Councilman Moore and Councilwoman Peters give Councilman Moore the motion and Councilwoman Peters the second on that. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. I will call the roll. Councilwoman Peters, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
Councilman Holmes, how do you vote? For this, but we don't have his mic. Mayor votes aye, so that motion is approved by at least a vote of six to nothing, probably a vote of seven to nothing, once we can get up with Michael. So we are now in closed session. Pause.
Excuse me, this is Terry Howe. Since this is a personnel issue, do you want me to log out?
Yes, I think.
Nice, thank you, sir. Just let, let me know when you need to log back in.
Terry Howe can stay. Michael Holmes needs to go to Microsoft Teams.
Okay.
You guys are going into closed session, correct?
So you want me to stay on?
And Hayes, I'll be in the open session.
Hayes, they rose in. This is the open session. If we're going in the closed session right now, then they're going to need to go over to Microsoft Teams if they were invited to that, which Councilman Holmes was.
Thank you.
Yeah, not a problem. Holmes is now just wanting to Microsoft Teams. Okay.
So Rod, you want me to log out?
You can certainly, you can certainly stay on if you need. We will switch the audio, which will cut you off from hearing anything in this room.
Okay, I'll just stay on.
We are back in open session for this special call meeting in the High Point City Council. Madam Attorney, did you want to do one quick update?
We would love to give you some positive news with regards to the Seaboard matter. Trying to connect Hayes Finley, our outside attorney that has been assisting us with this, and also the Public Service Director, Terry Howe.
They're both in.
Hayes, Terry, are you guys there?
I think they're muted.
So I'm here.
Terry is unmuted.
Terry, thanks.
Look like Hayes is still muted.
There we go. Hayes, are you there?
Turn that volume up a little bit so...
I just sent her an email to see if she could hear us.
You can hear Terry good, so the levels are...
As she had, she was ready and waiting, in the waiting room earlier, but I told her it would be a while.
We've been communicating back and forth, Joanne, but she was, she was waiting for us, I know.
I am calling her now, and we'll just... It looks like it. I don't want to speak there. No difference. Hello? Hello? I did. Okay, how can we call her then?
She needs to exit.
Okay, okay.
Text. Can I text her?
Please exit the meeting and then call me on my cell.
I'm muted, I'm muted, so it should be, you should be able to do it now, in theory.
Hey Hayes, I'm gonna put you on speaker. There we go, and I imagine you'll be able to hear us as well, Hayes, can you?
I can hear you. Is anyone else talking?
Well, the main thing is that you deliver the message that we are bringing to council today about the current status of the Seaboard matter, especially about the third-party study that was conducted.
Okay, great. Is Terry on as well?
And, and you know that this is an open session, this is not closed session.
Right.
And Terry, Terry is available as well, I think he can hear and can also weigh in as necessary.
Okay. Yeah, we had, Terry and I have been discussing some talking points, so I will just provide a brief update. So as you maybe remember, this is about the landfill site that the city closed back in early 2000s, and, or even before that, maybe. And this, this has been a site that is, the remediation efforts have been shared with another group called the Seaboard Group, and we have historically shared the costs under an agreement, 25% and 75%. And there have been... And there have been concerns recently expressed by the group that, due to some increase, increased effluent in the treatment system, the group felt that this allocation was unfair and was thinking that the increase was largely due to the landfills activities and should be contributed, that the city should be contributing more to the cost of remediation. So we collectively engaged an outside consultant to perform some evaluations of the site, and they conducted several site visits over the summer and looked at the historical data and collected samples. And basically, they determined that we just had a update from them on their preliminary results, just based on their initial site visits and things. They are going to recommend, make recommendations of how we can improve the site and continue to effectively remediate. But at this time, just based on their preliminary review, they had, they gave the opinion to everyone that the main cause of the increased treatments, and increased costs to the treatment system and the increase in the effluent is actually not attributable to the landfill leachate, but is, is mostly coming from the groundwater contamination. So groundwater is infiltrating the, potentially the southern intermittent stream which runs underneath the landfill. But this is really good news for the city because we have a independent party evaluate the site and tell us that it is not the city's, due to the city's operation of the landfill that's increasing these costs to remediate the site. There was a lot of information provided, so if you have questions about this, I'm happy to answer. But basically, they, they looked at the data and did a really thorough analysis, were able to kind of trace the contaminants in order to make that determination. So they, they had sort of a chemical profile to determine, to distinguish what was leachate and what was, what was groundwater.
Hayes, if I could, if I could try to summarize in less technical terms, correct me, correct me if I am wrong. Just a reminder, this is a superfund site, monumental environmental issues that we've been dealing with. Years ago, the city entered into a contract, an agreement with the group, Seaboard Group, which was at least 20, 25 participants. So it was the city shared responsibility for 25% of the cost, and the group absorbed 75% of that. The group brought a request to the city about a year ago, asking us to consider changing that 75, 25 split and pointing to, pointing fingers at the city saying that the landfill leachate was contributing to additional costs for treatment of the environmental issues. We all agreed that we would go out and get a third party to do a review of the situation. And the interesting and best information that we could have received was the fact that, no, it is not anything that the city is responsible for, it is not the CIST pipe, it is not the landfill, it is yours completely, and there's no reason for us to increase the amount of responsibility that the city is already taking. Is that okay, Hayes?
Yeah, that, that's pretty much the takeaway. I mean, I just want to emphasize, this was, this was preliminary conclusions, and so there are, there are a few things that they need to follow up on, just to confirm. There were some data gate gaps, and so, but yes, preliminarily, that is, that was their, that was their conclusion.
Terry, can you hear us? Do you have any comments?
I'm glad that Hayes talked and not me, because that really would have been technical. Yeah, that, that pretty much sums it up. As Joanne said, the other partners come to us with multiple different scenarios, anywhere from us paying 40% to almost 60%. But this individual, this outside consultant supported our 25%, so to speak. So I think it was a great, great news for us.
It definitely is good news for the city, and we just wanted to bring that to your attention as of that day. Hayes, thanks for sharing with our technical difficulties.
No, I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person, but yeah, happy to share the good news.
Thanks again, goodbye.
Signing off. Bye, have a good afternoon.
Thank you. Let's move to the next item then on the agenda, and this is a review, I think this is gonna be the review of the telecommunications ordinance revisions.
Okay, Susan, if you can, go ahead and share your screen. We apologize, council, our consultant expected to be here today, but had some other issues. Oh, I'm sorry. Let's see, Susan, if you're there, go ahead and share your screen.
Yes, it's not letting me pull it up right now. There we go.
Let's see. The reason why I haven't seen you. Oh, there we go, okay, thank you, Susan. All right, good afternoon, council. I'm Chris Andrews of the Planning Department, wanted to bring to your attention today some upcoming revisions to our, the city's wireless telecommunications standards within the development ordinance. Over the last year or so, we have been working with Cityscape consultants in assessing our ordinance and any of the changes that would need to be made to it, primarily due to federal and state laws that have been passed within the last year, year and a half. And so the reason that we're, we're implementing these, these revisions, or these amendments, is to keep up with those, with those changes in federal and state law. So today, we are joined by Susan Raybold with Cityscape. She is our consultant that we've been working with for the last year or so, and we've contracted, contracted with them to review our current ordinance and to recommend any changes that need to be made. So Susan will speak about those proposed changes, more of the substantive, substantive things within the ordinance, and then I'll follow up with some of the process and timeline-related notes. So Susan, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Susan Raybold, I'm with Cityscape Consultants, I'm their project manager. I reside in Greensboro, and Cityscape was formed in 1997. We have several offices in the United States, but we work exclusively with local government. So we do not own any towers, we don't do site consulting work for tower companies. We don't have a, that we sell outside of our consulting services, like we don't sell a wireless service. We write master planning, site reviews, and a number of other things that are related to the industry. So our contract with the city of High Point is to help you with your ordinance. Before we get started, I would like to make sure that when I use certain terms, that we all understand what they mean. So in wireless communications, we're talking about the infrastructure that helps your wireless handheld phone, or your notebook, or whatever wireless device you're using, is what makes it work. And those, that make those devices work are on towers, and there's used to be just one type of tower. It was a guide tower, a monopole, or a lattice, or a concealed structure. We have some macro cells in High Point. You have a concealed facility behind the grocery store and shopping area on Lexington, and you have a concealed facility at the public library. By concealed, we mean that you can't see...
It doesn't look good for a cell company, does it?
Text her and let her know.
Doesn't give you confidence in a cell company, does it?
She said at the beginning that they do not own the towers. I'll see if she'll give us an update here. Well, I guess she's got her control though.
She's backed out of the meetings.
So Susan intended to go through and kind of, or give a synopsis of what some of the terminology that you see within the ordinance. We, we may visually know, you know, can point to these pieces of infrastructure throughout the community, but to, to connect what you see with what's listed in the ordinance. So we have macro towers, which, you know, are macro, larger. There can also be macro cells which are on other infrastructure throughout the city. So here is, is shown our, some of our water towers, and then also connected to buildings. And then we have a growing number of small cell wireless facilities in the, in the city. And some are not concealed, they're just on, on, connected to wooden utility poles throughout the city. And as Susan has here, that these antennas are just mounted to the top of some sort of equipment at a lower elevation. And there are some specific parameters about what constitutes a small cell wireless facility in terms of the amount of equipment and that sort of stuff. We have some other concealed ones throughout the city, downtown. I know around the hospital, there's a number of them, but these are primarily, you know, in, in, the equipment is primarily underground, and then they, they try to blend in with some sort of infrastructure. They may have light poles, lights attached to them that may be used in, in other capacities as well. So there are certainly trends of, of using, you know, whether it's phones, other devices, and, you know, some of the projections here look like there's a continued growth in these small cell facilities to deliver the amount of, I guess bandwidth, I hope that's the correct term, but bandwidth that's required to, to power our devices. And so, you know, 5G is kind of that next generation of data delivery that, that is required, and most of these small cells are, are gonna be used for. There are, in 2018, and then in 2019, there were some federal regulations passed by the FCC, and then in 2019, there were state requirements that were passed. And so those are the things that are necessitating our, the need for our amendments. So here's just an example of kind of the comparison of some of those things. And again, this is, this is, this is from Susan, but, you know, talking about the amount of data that can be handled by these different facilities. So some of these larger substantive issues, or not issues, substantive changes to the ordinance, there are certain terms and pieces of infrastructure that have been defined by both the federal, federal level or state level, and we were changing our ordinance to align with those. It's, it's important to, to be in alignment with those. There's a certain number of, we can go back here for a second. There's requirements for what's called colocations, and that is the number of, of antenna that can be on a tower. You might look up at a cellphone tower and see those kind of triangles that are up there, and you might see more than one. Those are what are called colocations. So there's some, some minimum requirements for those that, that need to be added. One of the substantive changes right, that right now, council hears special use permits to allow certain types or certain size or within a certain area of a wireless facility. So I, I know it's probably been maybe about two years since the last, not since I've been here, just, just over one, one, okay. Since you've had a special use permit for a wireless facility, but with our proposed changes, there, there would be no more special use permits required. It could be a, or it would be a administrative function. So, so there are some, some, you know, height differences and differences in where these facilities are allowed in terms of zoning, zoning districts that would change. And we, we think that those have, have kind of covered, you know, to, to not have that need for that special use permit process. There are, especially related to the small cell wireless structures, those are allowed in all zone, need to be allowed in all zoning districts and within city rights of way. That's something that we don't have, we as the city don't have any ability to say no to. Like Randy said, the, we were, we, but cities may have been barriers to that before. We, we need to allow those. But one of the things that we can do is implement some standards for the infrastructure that goes along with those. So we have introduced some undergrounding standards, and that's just to try to keep some equipment underground instead of it being, you know, up in the right of way. All right, I think that was the end of Susan's slides, and I don't know if I can communicate with her after here, but, oh, Lee.
What council, given the last... Susan's expressionary ability to make... He had that even more usual spirit in order to give evidence, to sit in, and that's absolutely was in my extra testimony, there's certain aspects that you can consider, such as regular frequency waves, and you're offered a face with the citizens who are opposed to the tall tower, wanting to their neighborhood, but the council is pretty much limited.
So like in the past, they could, they could, where they, what was it? Something that you, you could have to prove that it depreciates the pro- the value of the property, all that kind of stuff? But that's still an option for a, no. That'd be handled in in your office. Many of those that we've gone through over the past few years, um, it might be a good idea to kind of let the public know that at some point, some way, fashion.
So Lee, and will this uh help us to be able to ex- extend access to broadband, especially during this COVID situation, so that students and uh offices, people working from home offices will have more access to broadband?
Yeah, this isn't about the actual like deployment of these things uh by building it. It's it's the process in order for somebody to come in and build it. So um, so from a permit or uh processing and and timeline, I'll talk about those two things here quickly. Um, within the the amendments for proposing a, what would be called a wireless telecommunications permit. Uh, it would be um, uh, kind of a, a, an umbrella for anything that requires a permit for wireless telecommunications. Uh, right now, somebody may come in with a commercial construction permit or right-of-way encroachment or a site plan and you know, not know what they have to apply for, so that we can make it much clearer for uh anybody that's, you know, within that industry to come in and apply for a wireless telecommunications permit. And as city staff, we will know what they need. You know, to to be able to submit to us. Um, and like Lee said, there's a shot clock, uh, a requirement that we have those processed and approved within a certain amount of time. Uh, so, you know, to to make sure that there's no confusion about what's being submitted and and what types of records, um, or what record type they need to submit to us. Uh, we can, uh, we hope that this will, will provide some uh clarity to that. Um, you know, there's been an encouragement to have as few number of permits as as possible. So having this um wireless telecommunications permit, we we hope that will be the case. And this, uh, we we will, would have in place after adoption of of the ordinance. Uh, and this would run through the city's Acela, uh, Acela permitting software. Uh, so this would be a, a new type of permit that that somebody who's who's installing these facilities would come in and apply for. And as far as the the process, uh, like Lee said, we 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 have put this out for public uh comment. It was sent to subscribers uh of the the planning department in Build High Point. We've also sent it to other constituents related to development and and wireless telecommunications. The uh, in, as well as our our uh TRC review members within city staff, uh, so they've had a a chance to look at it too. And, but we are entertaining comments. So if um, if if there are uh comments, we are, we are happy to receive them. We are looking at uh presenting this in November at the Planning and Zoning Commission uh, at their public hearing, November 10th. And then thereafter at a uh council meeting before all of you. I think that was all that I had at this point. In what respect? Uh, the, the whole, the process? Lee can correct me if I'm wrong, but.
I appreciate that you've reached out to others in the industry, et cetera. Um, has this been legally vetted?
Yes, they have an attorney, uh, Cityscape has an attorney that they practice in
We, we would like a copy of that and
I, I sent it to Megan on Friday. Okay.
Right, right. I just want to make sure that we're
Certainly, certainly, I will get that to you.
Any questions?
I was able to call back. Hi, I was able to call in my phone. I've been listening for like the last 10 minutes. So if you have any other questions for Cityscape, I'm happy to entertain them. And I did just want to reiterate that Anthony Lepore, who is a partner with Cityscape and attorney, has been involved in the crafting of the ordinance from day one. And he has gone through the revisions with me and the city staff uh with each revision that we made. So we feel pretty confident that we've addressed the federal and the state standards that need to be addressed in this version.
Hey, and this is Joe and Carl, I'll see the attorney. We appreciate that tremendously. I'm sure you understand as another attorney. We're just looking for someone that if something goes awry, that they're willing to put their signature on.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, Susan.
So we'll, uh, thank you very much, staff, and we'll move to the next area, the small area land use plan.
And while Heidi's getting set up for that, just let me mention one other text amendment that's going forward. We are doing a watershed text amendment. Also, uh, this is a result of some tweaks in watershed rules that the state has done. The, the intent by the state, they reviewed all their rules and are tweaking the watershed rules across the state in order to make it more consistent, more uniform where possible. There really are no substantive changes. There are more definitional changes, process changes, and procedural changes. So we're not briefing the council on that, but you will be receiving, uh, that'll also be going to P and Z in November and subsequently to city council as well. So just want to make you aware of that. It's out for public review as well.
Good afternoon, city council. I am Heidi Galanti with the Planning and Development Department. This is a presentation of land use assessments for the East Chester Drive and I-74 intersect interchange and the Jamestown bypass. Uh, we have conducted these assessments at the same time due to their adjacency, their similar timing, and because together they offer a more complete set of opportunities. Um, in other words, in some cases where one area may be weak, the other area may be strong. This is a presentation for your information only. We are uh doing this prior to putting it out for public review and comment. And we presented uh this to the Planning and Zoning Commission as a briefing um on the 22nd. And I'll give you more detail about the next steps at the end. These land use assessments represent a look at a small area based on a specific need due to a change in the immediate environment. They are policy documents that are concentrated on a very finite area to assess a specific issue. In this case, the issue is the impacts of two roadway projects on adjacent land uses. The policy recommendations of these assessments will be used in conjunction with other existing policy documents to provide guidance on future development opportunities. The first assessment is the East Chester Drive and I-74 assessment. It is 153 acre study area. It's approximate one mile section of East Chester Drive from Festival Park on the north to Lassiter Drive on the south. There are four main goals, and they are to protect the city's water supply, maintain the safe and efficient transportation functionality of the corridor, protect adjacent neighborhoods from incompatible development, and to protect the gateway corridor entrance into the city. The policy recommendations of this assessment will be used in conjunction with the policy recommendations of the land use plan and the East Chester corridor plan. In the case of a conflict, this, uh, we would defer to this assessment. There are four main factors that were considered: watershed, watershed restrictions, the new road alignment, existing land use, and property ownership. General conclusions for the East Chester corridor is that this is a very narrow corridor. It's, has limited area for new development. Lot consolidation will be needed for any new development to occur. And we need to continue to limit access points to East Chester to maintain its uh transportation functionality. There are some street name changes that will need to be considered at a future date. We are recommending some minor amendments to the land use plan. And we have seen there, this corridor has a lot of office institutional um zoning in the area. And with our new ordinance, there is a wider variety of uses that are allowed within the office institutional district. As for the street name changes, um, as you can see on this um map, the pink and black line represents restricted access. So there are um some restrictions on where properties can gain access to East Chester. The uh Hilton Court no longer connects to East Chester. You now have Cypress Court, which was realigned um to come in and connect to East Chester where Hilton Court used to intersect with uh East Chester. Gordon Road was realigned. There is a traffic circle. And it has been realigned to um come in directly across to where Cypress Court is. And then you have Gordon Court, uh, what, what we're recommending be to be Gordon Court, which is the cul-de-sac where Gordon Road used to intersect with um 68. Staff is providing these recommended, recommended changes for future consideration by the Planning and Zoning Commission as they have final uh say on street name changes. Now for the land use recommendations. Staff took an in-depth look at seven areas along the corridor, but ultimately concluded that only two areas should be amended at this time. This map shows the seven areas, and the colors shown on the map show where there is common ownership of two or more properties. The white areas denote single ownership properties. The first area is Area 1, which is along the new Cypress Court, and it has multiple constraints. It is in watershed critical tiers two and three. Tier two only allows new residential uses at one dwelling unit per acre. And tier three allows new development at two dwelling units per acre or 35% built upon area. Cypress Court cuts through the area, leaving a very small property at the corner of Cypress and East Chester with access restrictions along East Chester. Area 1A, which is um in the back, is recommended to remain as low-density residential. Area 1B is uh to remain designated as office. This small area may be able to be graded to drain into the city lake watershed, but it's limited in size. It's under an acre. And access constraints can significantly limit its development potential. It is currently zoned residential, single-family, three. Area 2 is along the edge of the lake and is more constrained than Area 1. It is in critical tier one and does not allow for any new development. Staff is recommending that if these properties around the lake in tier one become available, that the city should consider purchasing them to protect the city's drinking water supply. This is one of the two areas that is recommended for amendment from low-density residential to recreation and open space to reflect the desire to protect the drinking water supply. It is currently zoned residential, single-family, three. Area 3 is on the northwest corner of Cypress Court and East Chester Drive. It is six acres. It's split between O'Callow tiers two and three and City Lake general watershed, which allows uh development not to exceed 70% built upon area. This area could possibly be graded out of the O'Callow watershed, which would increase its development potential. However, the immediate surrounding area is more significantly constrained with watershed restrictions, topographic constraints, and controlled access that make it infeasible for commercial development to occur. In order to remain consistent in character of uh of the corridor in this section, Area 3 should remain in the office land use category. As previously mentioned, the office institutional um zoning district with the adoption of the new ordinance now supports a wide variety of moderate and high-intensity office, institutional uses, residential uses, including townhomes, multifamily, and minor personal services and retail uses up to a maximum of 4,000 square feet and a restaurant without a drive-through. High-intensity commercial uses are not supported in this area due continued, due to continued policy concerns for protecting the aesthetics of the corridor and the need for continued efficiency of this transportation corridor. Area 4 is along the eastern side of East Chester, north of Gordon Road. It's approximately 22 acres. It's in the City Lake watershed. It backs up to an existing residential neighborhood and is impacted by steep slopes and classified streams. Current uses are office and single-family homes with some undeveloped parcels. Potential land use for the undeveloped parcels and single-family parcels are office and higher-density residential use, but the topography and streams may make development difficult. The office land use designation should remain to support those options. It is currently zoned office and institutional and residential, three. Area 5, also on the eastern side of East Chester, is between the I-74 exit ramp and the new cul-de-sac on Gordon Road. It contains four lots, which add up to about four acres, some of which have frontage on East Chester, but can only be accessed off of the new cul-de-sac. Most of this area is within the City Lake general watershed. Its current use is single-family residential, but due to the lack of direct access, possible land uses for this area are office and higher-density residential, such as townhomes, condominiums, or apartments. The office land use designation should be expanded to include all of the properties within this Area 5. The current zoning is residential, single-family, three. Area 6 is on the east side of East Chester between I-74 entrance ramp and Ambassador Court. It consists of seven lots that total about eight acres. It is mostly within tier three of the O'Callow watershed with a small area in the City Lake watershed. Current uses are a mix of office, residential, and a religious institution. Ambassador Court will be realigned with York Avenue on the other side of East Chester. There may be an opportunity to add a small area of local convenience service uses in this area to accommodate some moderate intensity retail and personal service uses. For this to be feasible, it will require land assembly to manage the impacts, coordinate access, and maximize development potential under the watershed development restrictions. Conditional use zoning would be needed to ensure that land use policies are supported. Therefore, the land yours, for land use for this area will remain as office and medium-density residential. And when a development proposal uh may be submitted, the requirements of this assessment will be used to determine whether a land use plan amendment is appropriate. It is currently zoned office institutional. It is currently zoned office institutional and residential, single-family, three. The final area of this assessment, Area 7, is on the west side of East Chester between just north of York Avenue and the I-74 exit ramp. It contains 13 lots, which are approximately seven acres. It is in tier three Oak Halla watershed. Current uses are single-family residential and offices. Protection of the Timberlake neighborhood is needed to maintain its stability. It has limited lot depth, and potential future uses continue to be single-family residential and small-scale offices that are typically allowed in the transitional office district. The office land use designation should remain for this area. It is currently zoned transitional office and R3. Are there any questions on this assessment before I go to the Jamestown bypass? Okay. Moving on, the Jamestown bypass is a much larger area. It is a 1.4 square mile study area that covers an approximate two-mile section of the Jamestown bypass from I-74 to the Jamestown limits. And it includes the Five Point Commercial area between I-74 and Montlou Avenue. Four main goals for this are to evaluate the impacts of the new roadway, examine existing land uses, assess water and sewer availability, and provide policy guidance for future development. Existing policy documents that will be considered for this are the Land Use Plan, the U.S. 311 Bypass Study, and the Core City Plan. And again, in the case of a conflict, this assessment would be used. The main factors that were considered here were new road alignments, existing land uses, property ownership, water and sewer availability, and watershed restrictions. General conclusions for this assessment are, this is a new front door into the city. The bypass is scheduled to open in 2022. There are more opportunities for development. There are some new roadway intersections that will offer opportunities. There are less restrictive watershed regulations. There are access to undeveloped parcels. There are new opportunities for some underutilized properties in the area. And there is an opportunity zone on the west side of I-74. There is potential change in character to the existing Greensboro Road because it is no longer going to carry the amount of traffic that it currently carries. There are some street name changes to be considered, and we are recommending quite a few land use plan amendments. Starting with the street name changes. The Jamestown bypass connects I-74 to I-73, and it has already been named the Jamestown Parkway for the open segment in the Jamestown limits, which makes sense to continue this name from Vicary Chapel to the center line of I-74, and that's shown in purple on your map. Greensboro Road east of I-74 no longer connects High Point to Greensboro, and it becomes Main Street in Jamestown. A new name could be considered for this segment. Segment B, shown on your map, is a new alignment that forms a T-intersection with the Jamestown bypass, and it should be considered in conjunction with the Greensboro Road naming. Segment A is the dead end that used to be Greensboro Road that will no longer connect to the bypass. It will intersect with Hampton Road and should be evaluated to determine a new name. Greensboro Road west of I-74, there is about a third of a mile section that becomes Lexington Avenue at Five Points Place. Renaming this section to East Lexington Avenue should be considered. Again, these will be taken to the Planning and Zoning Commission at a future time for their consideration after a public hearing. Now onto the land use recommendations. Staff took an in-depth look at eight areas within the study area and recommends seven areas for amendment at this time. Other recommended changes will be based on assembling land in the submittal of a specific development proposal. As with the other, the map shows the eight areas, and the colors show where common ownership of two or more properties, and the white areas denote single ownership. Area 1. Area 1 is known as the Five Points Commercial area along Greensboro Road between I-74 and Montlou Avenue. It's approximately 20 acres. This will be, as I said before, a new front door into the city. The south side of Greensboro Road is within an opportunity zone, which could be an incentive for development. There is a mix of convenience service uses, including the East Gate Shopping Center. The U.S. 311 Bypass Study and the Core City Plan show this area as mixed use, and it is currently designated as local convenience commercial, and it is recommended to change to mixed-use development in support of the Core City Plan and the U.S. 311 Bypass Study. Because this area is already developed and it has some underutilized properties, it is recommended that the city initiate a mixed-use area plan for the Five Points area to create a detailed vision for what this new entrance to the city could look like. It is currently zoned general business and limited business. Area 2 is a narrow area between I-74 and Deep River Road and Wayside Street. It's approximately 46 acres. It has the site of the old Presbyterian nursing home and the old Evergreen nursing facility. The northern portion of the Presbyterian property is currently being used for housing restricted to people age 55 and over, but the multi-story building is vacant. The Evergreen site is vacant, and most of the buildings have been demolished. The Evergreen site has very limited road frontage on Greensboro Road, so the property on the corner of Greensboro and Wayside Street has been included in this area to provide an opportunity for better access into this area. This area could support higher-density housing or commercial uses such as a hotel and/or a restaurant. It is currently designated as mixed-use development, and that should be retained in support of a possible mix of uses. This area could be incorporated into the area plan that is recommended for Area 1, or it could stand alone and act as a transition to the interstate. It is currently zoned institutional, and until a plan for this area is created or development proposal is submitted, this zoning district will serve as a holding zone. Area 3 is located along the dead-end portion of Greensboro Road between Hampton Drive and Spencer Street. It's approximately 20 acres. It's divided into Area 3A and 3B. 3A includes the lots along Greensboro Road that have a mix of commercial and service uses with some undeveloped lots, a religious institution on the corner of Greensboro Road and the new road leading to the bypass. And Area 3B is directly behind and has a single-family neighborhood with an unopened right-of-way and some undeveloped lots. Spencer Road on the western end will have a right-in and right-out access only to the bypass. There will be no direct access to the bypass or the newly-aligned road from Area 3A. 3A is currently shown as community regional commercial, and 3B is low-density residential. Due to the reduced access, Area 3A may be better represented with land use designation with less intensity. Area 3B, with some land assembly and access to the dead-end portion of Greensboro Road, could support some infill housing with a variety of detached or attached homes. Because of these changes, the land use designation is recommended to change from community-regional commercial to local convenience commercial for Area 3A, and from low-density residential to medium-density residential for Area 3B. The current zoning for Area 3A is general business, and it is residential, single-family, five for Area 3B. Area 4, south side of Greensboro Road and north of the bypass between the newly-aligned road and Ring Street. It's approximately 14 acres. This northern section of Ring Street will not connect to the bypass, and it will not have direct access to the newly-aligned road on the western end of the bypass, or to the bypass. It includes a mix of commercial and office uses, some of which appear to be vacant. The U.S. 311 Bypass Study recommends that this area, as well as the remainder of the Greensboro Road to Ren Farm Drive and Penny Road, could act as a traditional Main Street with local commercial uses to serve the surrounding neighborhoods. Greensboro Road, as I said before, will be less traveled and more likely to function as a Main Street that would serve the local area. It is currently designated on the land use plan as local convenience commercial with a small portion of community-regional commercial on the western edge and low-density residential to the south along Ring Street. An expansion of the local convenience commercial designation is recommended to cover this entire area. The current zoning is general business and residential, single-family, five. The residential uses in this area no longer exist, so if a development proposal is submitted for neighborhood-serving uses, a change in zoning would be supported. Area 5, south side of the bypass between Enterprise Drive and just east of Ring Street. It's approximately 35 acres, and there will be a traffic, there is a traffic signal at Enterprise Drive, and there will be a new signal at the new T-intersection. There is also an 80-foot access from the bypass to the land to the south of the T-intersection. The Ring Street intersection with the bypass will have a median on the bypass, so it will be right-in, right-out only, without a signal light. There are some large undeveloped parcels in this area, but there is also a perennial stream that runs through the southern two parcels that will have an impact on its ability to develop. Could be an opportunity for development of a shopping center with a cohesive mix of commercial uses, possibly a hotel and higher-density housing. It is currently split between community-regional commercial, low-density residential, and it is recommended to change to mixed-use development to support uses for the community and the traveling motorist along I-74. It is currently zoned residential, single-family, five. Area 6A, it is south of the bypass between Scientific Street and the railroad tracks. It's approximately 25 acres. It's currently a mix of single-family residential and industrial use. It has some potential for redevelopment for residential due to the new signalized intersection with the bypass and the proximity to the new Ren Farm development located diagonally across the intersection. It's currently designated as light industrial on the land use plan. It has a mix of zoning of R5, heavy industrial, and light industrial. The land use designation is recommended to change to medium-density residential to support a mix of higher-density housing in the area. Additionally, it is also recommended that the city initiate a rezoning for this area to protect it for future residential use. Area 6B, it's located east of the railroad tracks, south of the bypass. It's approximately 45 acres. It's currently undeveloped except for one small parcel on South Scientific Street next to the railroad tracks. This area is constrained by lack of access, rough topography, and a classified stream. About half of this area is owned by the city for the future Dillon Road Park. It is currently designated as low-density residential, recreation and open space, and light industrial. Due to the constraints mentioned, the light industrial designation is recommended to change to low-density residential. Similar to Area 6A, it is recommended that the city initiate a rezoning for this area due to its constraints and adjacency to existing residential to the south and east. This area has been zoned light industrial since 1959, and only that one small three-quarter acre parcel has been developed with a 3,000-square-foot building. And that was done in 1986. The small cul-de-sac that you see on the map does not exist. It is an unopened right-of-way. Area 7, located on the southwest corner of the bypass and Dillon Road. This will be a signalized intersection at the bypass. It's about 30 acres. It's located outside of the city limits. It's also adjacent to the future Dillon Road Park. It's potential for redevelopment with a mix of housing styles and densities such as twin homes, townhomes, or multifamily. It will need to extend public water and sewer, and therefore it will need to be annexed into the city. The land use designation is recommended to change from low-density residential to medium-density residential. A change in zoning should be developer-driven to ensure that land use policies are met and that adjacent neighborhoods are protected. It is currently zoned residential, single-family, three within the city's extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. And last but not least, Area 8, on the southwest corner of the bypass and Dillon Road. It's approximately 82 acres. It's located outside city limits. About a third of the area is within the Oakdale Reservoir general watershed, and two-thirds of it is in the Oakdale reservoir, critical tier three, which limits development to two dwelling units per acre or 35% built upon area. There's also a perennial stream in the area that runs north-south just to the east of Dillon Road that may impact its ability to develop. Currently, area is mostly undeveloped with some rural residential uses. The area may have potential for some increased residential development. It will need to extend public water and sewer, and therefore it will need to be annexed into the city, could support a mix of residential uses, especially along the Dillon Road near the intersection with the bypass. It is recommended to change from low-density residential to medium-density residential. Due to the watershed restrictions and impacts of the stream, land assembly will be needed to achieve higher densities. It currently has Guilford County zoning of agricultural and residential, single-family, 40, which limits development to one dwelling unit per acre. And my last slide is the next steps. Staff needs to complete the public review drafts of the assessment. Then we need to put it out for public review and comment. We're creating a project website. We're going to do a mailed notice to everybody within the two areas. We will have two Zoom meetings, tentatively scheduled for November 17th for East Chester and December 15th for the Jamestown bypass. We will have an online comment form that people can fill out and send in. And then after we close public comment, we'll finalize the assessment based on the feedback that we receive. Then we will take it forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing, which is tentatively scheduled for January, and then possibly to City Council for your consideration of adoption in February. No, that was a lot. Do you have any questions?
Questions for staff?
Will this PowerPoint be available on?
I'm sorry?
Will this PowerPoint be available later for us?
Yes, we can. Sure.
Because I expect to lose some brain cells over this market, so.
I will. I'll send it to Lisa.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Anything else for this special meeting? I don't think so.
Thank you. Good time.
That being said, we'll need to adjourn this meeting, and then we'll have about seven or eight minutes till our regular council meeting starts at 5:30. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Councilman Moore and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Chris Williams. Is there anyone here who is opposed to adjourning the meeting? A hearing done, the special meeting is adjourned.